...of today, and they continue to lead out in the program and activities of life whereby they make us all proud as Grenadians. Our first speaker will be the Minister of Health and Social Security, the Honorable Clarice Modest Cohen. But before she comes, I'll ask Dr. Anthony Bridgeman to come and do the proper introduction of our next speaker. Put your hands together to Dr. Bridgeman.
As protocol has already been established, ladies and gentlemen, it gives me great pleasure to introduce our Minister of Health and Social Security of Grenada, Caracuay, Pity Martinique, Dr. Clarice Modest Cohen. Max DePree, in his book Leadership is an Art, writes, "The first responsibility of a leader is to define reality. The last is to say thank you. And in between the two, the leader must become a servant and adapter to the people." That sums up the progress of an artful leader. I'm very happy to report to you this evening that the people on the days exemplifies this attribute of a leader. Since taking the portfolio, the Prime Minister and his team have been defining our current reality in Grenada and have put measures in place to correct it, while at the same time, they have said thank you to the people for the understanding and the continued sacrifice. One of the cabinet ministers who have been at the forefront of this cause is our Health Minister, the Honorable Dr. Clarice Modest Cohen. Because you see, ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Cohen has been at the helm for a long time. Here is a short bio professional summary of who she is. She's known as Teacher Clarice. She started her teaching career as a science teacher at Wapman Junior Secondary School. She later opted to pursue medicine in the Republic of Cuba. And upon completion of her studies, she returned to continue to serve the people of St. Mark's, where she's known as the Doc. In 1998, as a result of a long commitment and enthusiasm for health sector transformation in Grenada, she was appointed a member of the Senate of Grenada and immediately became the junior minister. In 1999, she became the Minister of Health and Environment. Then in 2003, she became the Minister of Communication and Works and continued her relentless effort in nation building. Ladies and gentlemen, as a record indicates, she effectively responded to the challenge of Hurricane Ivans and Emily that devastated the nation. She worked closely with the Prime Minister and his team and international donors. Grenada made a remarkable recovery that saw the timely restoration of the nation's infrastructure. Between 2007 and 2008, she held a ministry, she held a Ministry of Tourism Portfolio and continued her diligent work, which saw major extension to some of our tourism facilities, such as the world-renowned Port Louis Marina, New Crochet Port on the Espinade, the Bus Terminal on Melville Street, and the Bruce Street Mall. Apart from her distinguished ministry, distinguished service as a Minister of Government, she has also found time to remain engaged in civil service and philanthropic initiatives. Here are a few examples. She collaborated with Dr. Hasbeck to publish a learning document on the importance of culture of HIV and AIDS. She participated in a study with Dr. Bourne to assess the benefit of implementing a visiting cardiology program in Grenada. She has researched and published educational pamphlets on prevention of blindness, diabetic retinopathy, and glaucoma. She was the recipient of the Caribbean Council for the Blind Award for extending services to the people of Grenada, Caracuay, Pity Martinique, in the prevention of blindness. Ladies and gentlemen, as you can see this evening, Dr. Modest Cohen has exhibited the attributes and elements of an effective leader in the health field. She has the skill set that is required to do the job. So please join me in welcoming her to New York. So ladies and gentlemen, I present to you Dr. Cohen. Thank you.
Dr. the Prime, Dr. Prime Minister, Dr. the Honorable Keith Claudius Mitchell, and my team at the head table, who have been already introduced, so I would not take time in doing that. Ladies and gentlemen, brothers and sisters all. First of all, I want to say that I am proud and honored to be a Grenadian. Just as many of you are, and I'm so happy to be with the diaspora. And I want to thank all either Dr. Mitchell for inviting me to be with the team, to come and meet with our people in New York, and to visit them in other parts of North America, in Canada, and in Montreal and Toronto. Brothers and sisters, why am I proud to be a Grenadian? I have seen over the years, before politics and afterwards in my active political life, I have seen Grenadians in the diaspora come out and help Grenada on a consistent basis, but especially in our greatest time of need during Hurricanes Ivan and Emily, and even right now, present time, in a tough economic time, the diaspora has been there for us. So I'm happy to be a Grenadian. And the first thing I wanted to do was to thank Grenadians who have come out for Grenada, who are supporting, and also many friends of Grenada, through the influence of Grenadians who have helped us along, especially in healthcare, but in many other areas of need in the tribe island state. So sometimes, if my time goes out and I don't get the time to say thank you, then I'm left to be sitting there regretting not having said thanks. So I wanted to say that first and foremost. Brothers and sisters, our friends in the diaspora have assisted us greatly. And I want to limit myself to the Ministry of Health to say that, having come in government and met a very difficult situation, you in the diaspora gave us in the Ministry of Health hope to carry on, and I want you to know that. Because of your donations, monetary and material, you have made a significant difference to our delivery of healthcare to Grenada, Caracuay, and Pity Martinique. Brothers and sisters, as I said before, these are tough economic times. I know you're feeling it here. We're feeling it even more. They say, "When you sneeze up here, we catch the cold." So we have the cold down there in terms of our economic malaise. And thank God, again, I am proud to be a part of a team with a leader that is not only lamenting and crying troubles, but also seeking solutions and seeking to implement solutions for the betterment of our people. We are all aware. We are all aware as a team. That is not going to be easy. But we've called on the nation to share sacrifices, and we, it's shared sacrifices. We are doing our own too. I came up here and for the first time in a lot of years, I did not have roaming on my phone because we decided that we have to share the sacrifice and cut it off. So if, no, I think I was going to beg for a phone call, but somebody let me one already. So that is how we live, that is how we live, and we're sharing the sacrifice. So I wanted you to know that. Now brothers and sisters, it is said that government is a continuum. So when you come into government, if there's good that is already in progress, then you ought to take it up and run with it. And we are committed to doing that. Also, if you meet problems, like you meet debts, you can't say you weren't the one who negotiated or caused the debt. You have to take it up and run with it and deal with it. I must say that we have not met a lot of positive things in progress that we could run with, unfortunately. But we have met a lot of the problems, and we are working to deal with it. So in the areas that I'm going to speak about, I just wanted to mention a few things. So for example, in the Ministry of Education, my colleague minister, he met with a debt owing to UE, most of you would know it as University of the Western Indies, a debt of $16 million owing in terms of economic costs for our students. So that students wanting to go to university had to find all of the university fees to pay, and that made it extremely difficult. And through our Prime Minister and Minister for Finance, his team is working, they have paid some monies. And the good thing is, once these institutions see that you're willing to pay, they usually say, "Well, you'll pay the rest and we'll start taking your students again." So again, our students who want to go to a high institution of learning in the region, they are now able again to go to the University of the Western Indies because we have been able to pay some of what we owe. Coming into the Ministry of Health, brothers and sisters, again, I met with many challenges. There is an institution in the region that is called the OICS, Whole Procurement Unit, we call it PPS. And they source medications and other medical supplies for us in the region, in the eastern Caribbean, so that with bulk purchasing, we can reduce on the cost. And they have done it very effectively. But again, we had not been paying our dues, and so the OICS discontinued the supply of materials, medicines, and lab supplies to our hospitals and our other institutions. So that was a hurdle that we had to overcome. We were owing to an American health organization for vaccines, and so they discontinued sending vaccines for us. Again, they purchased for us at a very reasonable rate. And you know, I mean, those of you who, all of you have lived with Grenada, you can't tell you the last day we had polio, or measles, or mumps, or any one of those communicable diseases that can be prevented by vaccines. We have had a very effective program over the years in the high 90s in terms of coverage. And so we were at risk of seeing all those diseases returning. Because remember, even though we have kept it under control in Grenada, we live in a global village, and so all people visit other countries, and they can contract it if they're not covered. And also persons visit our countries, and they can share, among other things that they, good things that they can share, they can share the bad as well in terms of diseases. Brothers and sisters, in the area of social services, which also administers the housing program, again, we met a debt owing to all of the hardware suppliers for housing material. And any parliamentary representative will tell you that the two greatest needs that we encounter in our communities are the need for jobs and the need for housing. And therefore, we were greatly challenged, particularly the Ministry of Social Services, to provide that, or supply that need because we were owing. The fact is, brothers and sisters, I had to set the stage and let you know what we meant. But most importantly, I want to tell you what we have been doing and what we intend to do. So you may hear your brothers and sisters calling and bragging because it is tough. We are undertaking some shared sacrifice that would not make things easier in the beginning, but it will give us hope. And since that is not my area of expertise, I will leave it to my Prime Minister to tell you in terms of economic activity, what we are doing to bring benefits later on. And I know he will competently speak on those issues. So brothers and sisters, what are we doing? In education, as I said before, we have started to pay the debts. So now our students can go to the University of the Western Indies without having to pay the economic costs. They have enough other costs to deal with already. But also, we found a situation very chaotic in that, in recent years, they implemented a system called universal access to secondary school. It meant that everyone coming from primary school went into secondary school. Now, in principle, I have no problem with that, and my government has no problem with that. The problem is, if you're not prepared, because you have persons of different capacities and different interests, and our schools are generally geared towards the academic, then we have to ask ourselves, what happens to the person who is not academic minded? The person who wants to have a skin, learn to make tables and chairs, or be a plumber or electrician? So one of the problems, we were not ready for it yet. And in terms of having the teachers and the tutors who were ready to administer the program, that was another thing. So while we do not mind universal access into secondary school, it has to be capably and effectively planned for, otherwise, we could encounter problems. And that is what we encountered, brothers and sisters. So our President Minister for Education and his team, they are looking at it. When you see a child entering secondary school who cannot read and write, brothers and sisters, this is a catastrophe. This is a crisis. And if you ask people, they will tell you that. When you see a school sending up 80-plus students to do an English test for the CXC or GC, as you may have called it, whatever, and you get three and four passes in English, this is a catastrophe. This is a disaster. And so while we do not have Hurricane Ivan and Emily plaguing us, we do have those kinds of disasters that are plaguing our nation. And as you well know, that education is the single greatest factor that would lead people, our people out of poverty and develop the nation. And if our education is not adequate, then we are in serious trouble. So while the universal access has not worked, the Minister is engaging his team, his administrative persons, as well as specialists in the area of teaching, and they have been meeting on a regular basis, looking at trying to resolve that problem, how we are going to deal with it. So you may hear now that your little niece, or grandniece, or nephew, or grandchildren in Grenada did not get to go into the secondary school because some of them just have not been prepared. And they will get frustrated, and it will be worse in the end. So Minister is saying that they have to keep them back in the primary school, provide special classes and sessions for them, to take them up to basic reading, writing, and mathematics, and also to teach them a skill. Because one of the things that we learned in a previous life when we were in government, we did a study, and we found that there was a major skills gap. While our children were getting 14 and 15 passes at CXC, and some with distinction, we have very bright children. Don't worry, I'm talking about a percentage. But every child who does not succeed within the education system is of concern to us. So while this is not the mainstream, we have a lot of children who perform. Sometimes, I see young boys and girls on the street, and chatting with them, they will tell you, they have associate degree, they have this subject, and they have that subject. So we have, we are a bright nation, and we have bright people. So don't think I'm sending that kind of message. But we have some children who are in trouble because the system was not organized to take care of them. So brothers and sisters, a program is going to be done for them. And in the interest of time, I will not go into it, but I want to assure you that the Minister and his team are working with it, and the rest of us in cabinet are there waiting to support him when he does come with another type of program that will answer to the needs. But there are other educational programs that we're doing for those who are dropped out. So Social Services is offering training for young men and young women who, for whatever reason, did not succeed in school and dropped out. They're giving them a second chance in a variety of programs. Now, we have young women through Social Services being trained in building technology, in laying tiles, in electrical wiring, and things that are not traditional areas of skills that our women did not get involved in. But as we know, many of our young women who fall pregnant teenage pregnancy in their early years, they're just home without a skill and hopeless. So this is offering new hope to our young people. But brothers and sisters, we have a program called the Imani Program. And I sat there, and I was trying to remember what it meant. I had a senile moment, and I hope somebody can help me. I think it's trust in yourself, or love of self, something like that. Faith in yourself. Faith, that is the word. Faith in yourself. And that program was started by us before, not this last time, before. Because brothers and sisters, we saw a number of young people leaving school with no hope. Because as you know, it is impossible for our government to provide jobs for everybody. But we are committed to creating the enabling environment, the opportunities, the teaching opportunities, so they can find businesses on their own. And again, I know others will speak of what one initiative we're taking to give them opportunities to set up their own businesses and employ. But first, they have to be trained. So at this time, we have 3,000 young people in various areas of job training, in the private sector and in the public sector. Those people were the ones sitting on the block with subjects, or some without subjects, but a desire, a yearning to get into something and to stay out of trouble. And now that program under the Ministry of Youth is offering them just that kind of opportunity. And again, through the enabling environment created by the government, some of which you see us representing here today, brothers and sisters. I know my colleague Minister for Youth has said that, based on the demand, she's going to request more. And I know World Bank and other institutions have been extremely supportive of this project. And especially as we look at the Caribbean region as one space and free movements of people, when we train our people, and we train them according to standards, not just bringing them in a course, and at the end of the day, they can't get a certificate. But they are going to be certified according to Caribbean and Caracum standard, and according to international standards, so that wherever they go, they can find a place in terms of employment. The Ministry of Youth is doing a lot more, brothers and sisters. But in the interest of time, I will just say that they are bringing now, it's youth and sports, they're bringing now more cricket into the area. For years now, our stadium has been like a white elephant. But now, we're bringing our stadium back to life, and I know my Prime Minister is killing on cricket, and he knows more details than I do. I leave that to him. So brothers and sisters, we are looking at what we can do. I just wanted to add, in the areas of social services, we have a program that helps young people to go to school. They cannot pay the transport that is provided. Because we are well aware that because of the unemployment situation that we met prevailing and will continue indefinitely as we work on programs, that we have to still continue to educate our children. So if we have this school feeding program that gives them food at $1 per day for their lunches, and even those who do not have, get free lunches. And also, we have the assistance for transport under both Social Services and the Ministry of Education. And persons are also given assistance for the tuition fees if they cannot. But I want to emphasize that, as a government experiencing tough challenges, and perhaps even if things were better, we would be severely challenged to provide those things for everyone. So what we say is, we cannot give it to everybody. But certainly, what we have is officers trained in that area going out in the field. When children do not go to school, they inquire why. And if they see a socio-economic situation that prevents children from going to school, then the government steps in and assists those children so that they can avail themselves to an educational opportunity. So in the areas of social services, in the areas of education, there's quite a lot going on. And some persons may speak to it as they make their presentation. But brothers and sisters, I want to tell you that, you know Grenada, Grenada is a revolutionary country. And at this time, we're revolutionizing how we do things in our country so that we can make it better for everyone in the near future. And brothers and sisters, because I'm Minister for Health, I thought I needed to take a little more time in the area of health, and I wanted to just share some things with you concerning health. Brothers and sisters, we want in our government to provide healthcare that is affordable, that is accessible to all, and that is sustainable. Because we had difficulties in paying for supplies over the years, and I say we as a government, because we have to take on whatever we met in a situation. Whereas in a previous time when we were government, suppliers were willing to advance us without pay. Now you find that no supplier was willing to advance us any medication, no matter how important it was to save lives. And therefore, the Minister for Finance and Prime Minister had to find ways, innovative ways, to find monies to pay them. So sometimes, you might have to find $1.5 million in a one-off to pay the OICS, PPS, and they will send you drugs. But then there are roads to be fixed, there are children to be sent to school, the school feeding program, et cetera, et cetera. How do we sustain that, to ensure that every time somebody goes to accident and emergency, we call it casualty in Grenada, they can find the medication that they need for pain relief and other types of relief? How do we ensure that the lab has reagents to do blood tests on a sustained basis? These have been some of the questions that we have asked ourselves. And how do we ensure that we provide a service that will be exemplary, that will make people happy, even though it cannot compare to our first world country, but for our third world country would be an excellent service for our people? We have organized over that, we have had a number of workshops with people in the Ministry of Health and for all the stakeholders, and we have come up with some answers. The first thing is, brothers and sisters, it's something that we know already, that the best way to address healthcare is to keep people healthy, first of all. So we have thought of revitalizing our primary healthcare program, go back out in the communities, educate people, promote wellness, exercise, what you eat, what you drink is important. And we are saying, each one of you must also take responsibility for your health. So if we had paid you, then you must go and exercise. And if you do get disease, then if we manage it adequately, then we open, that would be a way of preventing expenses in the wrong direction, and also keeping people healthy so that they can be productive and make a contribution in their country. So we have revitalized that program. We have taken on some new physicians, we couldn't take on many, we've taken about five. But when we came in, brothers and sisters, we met about 100 nurses, trained, sitting down at home, doing nothing, and frustrated. We took on 42 of those nurses, and we put them out in the community. We said, "Go and do food care, go and educate diabetics, see what's happening to them, and ensure that they do not fall through the cracks." Call all patients as they're discharged from hospital and go in the community, and see what their needs are. And patients who are referred, see how we can do it. So we started that about a year ago. From July, we'll be celebrating one year, and already, we're revisiting, we're sending out questionnaires to our people. How can we better serve you and make what we do more meaningful? So we have, we have diverted more monies, and in our budget, we have allocated $2 million for that additional program that we have started. So we do have, we did have a primary healthcare program before, but in order to strengthen it, we had to pay more nurses and more doctors. And don't you ask me what happened to the rest of the 100 nurses. What we did is, because we did not have the financial capacity to employ them, because it's one thing to take somebody on, it's one thing, it's the other thing at the end of the month, not to be able to give them a salary, so that is important. And brothers and sisters, I know you are Grenadians, and you're patriotic, and you follow what's happening. And over the years, not so long ago, what we found was a situation where, at the end of the month, the then government was not able to pay salaries. You know what I'm talking about. It's not bad talking, it's a reality. And if not so long ago, they could not pay it, in one year and some, we can magically find a means to pay everybody. So what we did, I spoke with, I heard that Trinidad was taking in nurses, already they were taking in nurses from St. Vincent. And so I spoke with the Minister, and my Prime Minister spoke with the Prime Minister of Trinidad and Tobago, and we asked whether they could take them on. Because it pained me, when one nurse said to me, she said, "You know, I'm beginning to hate nursing." I thought it was a profession where I could easily get a job. And here I am at home, two years on. And as you well know, when you get your driver's license, that's when you learn to drive. So if you train nurses and you cannot offer them a job, then nurses are in trouble. By the time they get employed, they may forget a lot of the skills. And therefore, while we would have liked to employ all of them, we had taken a policy decision a long time ago, recognizing that there's a demand within region and worldwide for nurses, to train some, since we cannot employ everybody, train them. So when they go out, the United Arab Emirates and other countries are taking in nurses. And I think even some institutions in the US are sending out now agents to take in our nurses. We said, "Why not train some young people who would have left school?" So we're working with the Imani Program, the Youth Program, to bring someone into the nursing assistant and the nursing program. And we went to Trinidad, and they said they could take them. Trinidad needs quite a few nurses. And so very soon, in the next few days, perhaps before I leave North America, because they said from the 8th, they'll be taking on, they have interviewed, everything has been done, and all of our nurses who are sitting home doing nothing, the rest of them will be taken on by our sister island, Trinidad and Tobago. the rest of them will be taken on by our sister island, Trinidad and Tobago. So we continue to work with St. George's University. They have a school, they have a school of nursing. It's kind of on hold for now, but we're working to have a school of excellence in nursing because in our government system, we cannot go, we have not, we have not established the capacity to train them in the bachelor's and in the master's. And now the region is saying, the entrance requirement for, to get into the nursing profession, you have to have a bachelor's. And I'm sure you know what's happening in the U S as well. And so S G U has the capacity to get resource persons, to train people, and we're working with them. At heads level, our Prime Minister is working with the Chancellor. And we, the Ministry of Health and Education, we're working with St. George's University to train more nurses, to work with our people in Grenada, but also to go there and get jobs so that they can send back monies to their families. We're good at that, you have done it before and we will continue to do that, brothers and sisters. And I just want to mention briefly, I just want to mention briefly that as we redefine health, we redefine the roles of our nurses and our nursing assistants. And we teach them to multitask and we multitrain them. Because you cannot tell me that a nurse only has to dress an ulcer or give an injection. We have to go there. We have to go there and do food care. We have to go there and monitor blood pressures. We have to bring in the persons who for some reason could not come to meet the doctors in their appointment and educate them. We have to meet with community persons and educate them. Because if we educate them in health care, then we can teach them wellness and keep them healthy, brothers and sisters. So we have teams, just recently, we had a team going to Concord for the whole day to educate people in different areas. We had specialists going out and they saw over five hundred people in one team, brothers and sisters. So we are working to earn your respect and your confidence. And we are going to continue to do more and more of that. In terms of the medical supplies, as I said, the Ministry of Finance is running behind the Ministry of Health, recognizing that health is the wealth of a nation. And they paid many of the bills in excess of six million dollars thus far so that we can regain the trust of our providers of materials. And we're working on that on a daily basis. But sometimes you will hear that we don't have this and we don't have that because we really have not reached the economic level where we can always have these things. But we're working on initiatives. My Prime Minister and Minister for Finance will be speaking about the national health insurance. But we are saying, brothers and sisters, even if it's going to be quality, if it's going to be accessible to everybody, if it is going to be sustainable, which means every time they can get it, we have to have contributions. It cannot be free. As they said, the Chinese say, good things go cheap and cheap things don't go. If you get it free and you get it all the time, it cannot be good. It cannot be top quality, that's the reality. I wish we could do it for everybody, but we cannot. So we are looking at ways to collect revenues. People come from abroad. There may be Grenadians who can afford, or there may be foreigners, they go to accident and emergency. They are treated, they have insurances. And we have no system in place to collect some monies so that we can buy the panadol for those who cannot afford. This does not make sense. And we're making moves to do that, brothers and sisters. So only this week, we sent from Ministry of Health new fees and an incremental plan. Now, Prime Minister will talk to you about some of the taxes that we're implementing. And so we're saying you can't put all of it on the people all at once. What we do, we can immediately start with those who have insurances. And many people who visit the country, they do have insurances. So there are some areas we're going to start, but it's going to be gradual so that people don't feel too much of the burden all at once and get frustrated, brothers and sisters. But also, we are aware that there are some people who will never be able to pay. They are sick, they are indigent, they are elderly, and they're not able to pay. And we're working with Social Services to identify those people. Many of them are already in a program organized by Social Services so that we will examine them. And we are coming up with a national I D. And within that I D will be information that says this person is examined. So when a poor person goes to accident and emergency, or casualty as we say, and that card is wiped, then that will come up. So that person doesn't have to run bare for free treatment. It is their right and they are protected by the state, brothers and sisters, so they can have access to such everybody. So we are looking for monies. We love the donations you send. But we also are aware that there are some people who cannot afford. And that is where your donations get to make so much of our different brothers and sisters. So we're not anywhere where we can start showing off. We love what you do and thank you again so much. We have a donations desk in the ministry. We know over the years, people say, we send something, we don't know if you get it. If you didn't get it, nobody says that you. Those days are over. We have two persons, brothers and sisters, dedicated to that. They will respond and persons who have sent will attest to that, that they get a response. If you want photos, we send you photos. And if you want an autograph, we also send you that as well, brothers and sisters, with a type you know. But we are not only doing those kinds of services. We have put new equipment. Within one year, within collaboration with St. George's University, we have put new equipment in the hospital. So we have now a new digital X-rays so that our doctors who are specialists, Grenadian doctors abroad, and we have a lot in the U S, in New York and other places, we might want to tap their brain to ask them a question. We can just send the images to them digitally and they can play a meaningful role in terms of the management of our personal access. We have, we have an endoscopy unit. But over the years, because the services were not provided, then the equipment, they developed wings and they flew away. When we came in, we couldn't find the equipment. So again, we have purchased the equipment and through our collaboration, which I will speak to shortly about, with St. George's University, we have endoscopy services every month for the indigent who cannot afford and even for other people as well. Because for endoscopy, it costs from a thousand dollars upwards. So you know that a lot of people in Grenada will not be able to afford it. Brothers and sisters, an oxygen plant. So many times we hear we don't have oxygen. You're waiting on the cylinder to come from Trinidad. So if they both break down by somewhere between Trinidad and Grenada, you can't get oxygen. And when we came in and we had dialogue with St. George's University, they said they were willing. And through that collaboration, we have purchased a brand-new oxygen plant that provides oxygen for the patient. Pulling oxygen from the air and concentrating it so that we provide our home. We have trained our staff, the providers of the service, the machines and so on, they have come in and they have helped in a way, on its way. In addition, in the X-ray department, we also got two ultrasound machines, one being portable. Because there are times when you have to go to the patient. The patient cannot come to the X-ray department. And therefore, we thought it both to have one that is stationary and one that is mobile. And we have done that in brothers and sisters in just one year of being in office. You give us five years, you give us ten years, you give us fifteen years, you know that there will be a lot more, brothers and sisters. Brothers and sisters, I mentioned relationship with St. George's University. We felt, you know, having gone to different meetings and so on, people say, you have a school of medicine, what are they doing? And we recognize that if we worked harmoniously with them, there's a lot more that we could get. So in addition to finances that they give us every year, they have a bank of, a skills bank of all the doctors who have graduated from St. George's University and who have qualified in various areas of expertise, in cardiology, in pediatric ophthalmology, and a number of other areas, which I have here, but somewhere, but I can't find it. But in a number of areas, they are coming back every month to give services to all people in those areas free of cost problems and systems. But you know, one of the things that is a little troubling is that there is no Grenadian on the team. So I've been speaking to Ambassador Antoine, I've been speaking to Ambassador James, and we hope we can remedy that in the shortest possible time. To have a skills bank of our Grenadian professionals.